All right, let's, I know that's a little early, but our commissioners are here, our clerk is here. Your cast is with you, so it is probably appropriate to proceed. So I'm going to go ahead and call to order the work session and move right into it. Our clerk Lisa Postumus Lyons here to walk us through annual report and elections.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present our office's annual report for 2022. For those of you who are new commissioners or sit on Finance Committee, what usually occurs is every year, each year, my office will give performance measurements and an annual update to the Legislative and Human Resources Committee. However, I felt there's just so many new people and the clerk's office is really such a large office that deals with all of your constituents in such a way that we really felt it was, would be helpful for you all to get to know what my office does a little better. So we wanted to be able to present to the entire board. So I really appreciate this opportunity. Just an overview of what we'll cover today. I'll briefly share how the office is structured, our leadership, who's with me, and an update of all the major activities and significant accomplishments throughout the year and really what we're looking at here in 2023 and 2024. We'll finish by giving you a very, very brief glimpse at our Elections 101 presentation that we've taken to the public. Like I said, it'll, to preface that, it will be very brief. And admittedly, it's, it's not the same presentation that we gave in 2022 or the end of 2021, simply because our elections have completely changed as a result of the 2022 proposal two. So like I said, that will be very brief, just so you have an idea of what we're talking about when we go and talk with your constituents in the public. So while elections is the most visible part of the clerk's office, we handle quite a vast array of important functions, important, they are unsexy, but they are very critical functions of county government. I like to say that we interact with our constituents, with our people at every major milestone of their lives, the good, the bad, and the ugly. We do vital records and elections, as well as we're the keeper of the records for the 17th Circuit Court in the clerk's office. We have, then we are the combined office, about half of Michigan's counties are combined county clerk and county register of deeds offices. Not all counties have chosen to do that. That's been our, it's been how we've done it in Kent County for 80 years?
1976.
Yes, since 1976, thank you. And admittedly, a lot of counties really push back on that thought, that idea. It's not a, it's not a fight that I wade into on behalf of other counties because frankly, it works for us here. So we are in charge of recording and maintaining all real property records here in our register of deeds office. My chief deputy clerk, as you know, is Rob McCumber. He's served alongside me for 10 years come this September. He was first my chief of staff in the legislature and he's been with me at the county since 2017. Some of you may know that Commissioner Merchant was actually the first person who I ever hired. She managed my first House campaign in 2010. And then immediately upon graduating, we hired her in our legislative office, too. We also have, we also have with us, Mike Sullivan is our new elections director. He's been on the job for one month today. Yep, jumped in with both feet. He's doing a great job getting up to speed very quickly during a busy time in elections. Jerry Chaya, you all have seen him unless you're new to the board. He is our 24-year veteran at the Register of Deeds office. He is a wealth of institutional knowledge when it comes to anything land records related. And not just for us here in Kent County. He's very, very well regarded statewide for his expertise and his experience. Amy Doring is with us. She is our chief deputy in the incredibly busy clerk of the court office. She's been in that role since, I believe, April of 2018. And she does a great job of balancing an autonomous office of the clerk that really functions and has to function in many ways within that court structure. Additionally, we have a truly amazing group of management, as well as union staff members represented by the UAW, as well as TPOAM. Their dedication, they serve the public every day. I'm astounded by their hard work and the customer service that they bring, their attitude that they bring every single day. It's a total staff of 45, though on, though on this slide, you'll see that we have 47 total. I'm confessing that I'm being presumptuous because we do have a request before you shortly for additional staff. So these next few slides will give you an idea of the volume of work we handle across all four divisions in the clerk's office, the clerk registers office. This slide highlights the vital records division. And it's the number of new records we filed in 2022 compared to the last three years. The green on the slide indicates an increase in the number of filings over each year, and a red is a decrease. Some major things to note of this, births for the third year in a row are actually on the decline. Deaths are declining, declined in 2022. We think that's kind of working its way back to pre-pandemic, what was kind of a norm, pre-pandemic. I will say, as it relates to births and deaths, we call Kent County a high birth, a high death county simply by nature of the vast healthcare industry that we are fortunate enough to have here, the medical mile, our hospital systems. A lot of people come here to, to have their healthcare serviced. And so this is, it's, it's because we're a high population county, but also because of the healthcare system that we have here. Marriage license have increased for the second year in a row. Again, that we believe is a normalizing from pre-pandemic levels as well. CPLs have declined substantially for the second year in a row. And we hit a high for CPLs, concealed pistol licenses, license applications in 2020. We don't go back more than three years here. But what, what you will notice is interestingly, every presidential election year, you'll see a bump in CPL applications. Just interesting little tidbit there. So in addition to those numbers for new records, we also processed just over 73,000 requests for copies of newer additional records. We have an average of 400 transactions a day in our office. Looking at elections, most voters, when they think about elections, they think of them being once, once or twice every two to four years. I like to say in Kent County, we do elections often and we do them well. We have at least three elections every year and four in presidential years, or like in 2022, when we had to have special elections to fill legislative vacancies. So in 2022, we had a special primary election in March to fill what used to be the 74th House District. And then May was the special general election for that district, as well as nine school district proposals. In August, we had the statewide primary. And November, we had the statewide general. Of note is the percentage of absentee voting. It's interesting because in smaller elections, and this is a result of no reason absentee voting provisions, we've noticed that we're seeing a higher rate of absentee voter participation in these, what we would call smaller elections, the May, the off-year elections. But we're, we're noticing kind of what last year I called kind of a, the new benchmark for bigger elections. And so they're not as high as, the absentee voting rate is not as high as in the smaller elections. They're more close to 40 or 50%. And again, we're, we're talking, we had exponential increases our first couple of years off of 2018's provision allowing no reason absentee voting. Then you coupled that with a pandemic and absentee ballot applications being mailed out to all voters. It was just an explosive amount of absentee voting. So we kind of look at 2022 as maybe what we think is the, kind of the, the new bench, the new baseline. For the registers office, our, kind of our key measurement is the number of property-related recordings, deeds, mortgages, new refinances, liens, et cetera. These are, you know, we would call them a metric, but they're not goals that we set. They're not something that we can pursue. They're obviously simply an indicator, an economic indicator, and tied truly to the health of the real estate market and the economy. So there's nothing we can control about the numbers. But looking through the pandemic years, our recordings spiked due to really the low interest rates. And in 2021, we nearly beat our record high of, high number of recordings. The all-time high was 2,006 at 140,065. And in 2021, we finished with 139,726, which is a very stark contrast to last year, 2022. We dipped by almost 30%, so 44, about 44,000 less recordings in 2022. For the first time since Jerry remembers, so the first time since at least 1999, we had under 100,000 recordings. So the decline is kind of important to note due to the impact in, in the budget at the $30 per recording fee, which is statutorily set. Being down 44,000 recordings equates to a $1.3 million hit in revenue. So again, there's nothing, you know, we're at the mercy of, of the market, but it's just really important information to kind of keep in mind as it relates to the impact that that has. And 2023, looking ahead, really doesn't look much better yet for January, but we haven't hit the summer market. The January through May, we recorded only 60% of what we recorded in the first five months of 2022. So again, it's not, they don't point to any inadequacy or insufficiency in the register of deeds office. It's a market thing. And so we will continue to watch that. When I first started in 2017, I think we were just over 50% of our recordings were electronically recorded with us. We are now up to 80% of all of our, all of our recordings in the office are from an electronic recording process. Looking at the clerk of the court office, this slide will give you a picture of the number of cases, case files the court opens each year, and then the number of documents that we file within those new and existing cases. They're enormous figures that really speak to a tremendously busy office. As you can see, there was a short-lived dip in cases and filings in 2020. Again, that was during the pandemic. There was a lot of closures, a lot of delays. And so because of that, we've, we experienced a very quick rebound. And so we're going, I think we're going to see that for a long time simply because that backlog of cases, it doesn't go away, it just delays it. And so we're going to have to, we'll, we'll see that continue. So we, we really reached the high water mark for new cases over my tenure. Moving on to significant accomplishments, in, since the 2020 general election, much of my time as clerk has been spent on educating the public about how our elections are administered. That, that particular election really showed that even the most engaged citizens really don't have a full or true understanding of how we do what we do, both before, during, and after our elections. So while I used to, I used to be very careful not to take on a role of activism as clerk, but more just an administrator, I really, over the last several years, have embraced a new role as ambassador, particularly for our elections. So in 2021, we spent a lot of time educating our policymakers and our leaders about elections. And then in 2022, we took our Elections 101 on the road. We called it our Elections Roadshow directly to the voters. So we spoke to Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs, Kiwanis, classrooms, luncheons led by local business leaders, senior advocates, literally any group that would listen. And they've been very well received. We look forward to doing more so that we can continue educating the public and instilling confidence in our, in our process here in Kent County. If you recall, back to December, we had a recount here in Kent County of Proposal 22-3, which was petitioned for by the Election Integrity Fund. It was not unique to Kent County. They requested recounts of, of proposals in several different counties throughout the state. But what happened for our purposes, we had 150 recounts, our precincts that were recounted. So we're looking at about, we're looking at, I mean, almost a, we have 252 precincts plus 252 absentee counting boards. And so we were looking at somewhere around a quarter to a third of our election was recounted. It was a huge undertaking. We had to hire 100, we had 162 workers, both paid and volunteered, our local clerks. For those of you, if you interact with your clerks in your districts, just know, they are awesome. We have awesome partners here in Kent County. They really stepped up and participated and helped make this recount happen. And admittedly, we had to work, to hire 162 people to work for Kent County is a feat in and of itself. We had a lot of time spent with both Linda and Hillary and HR trying to figure out how we make something so, so immediate, but so temporary work and, and also so unknown. We admittedly were expecting this recount to take two weeks, at least two weeks. We got it done in three days because it was just so efficient. People answered the call and we were able to kind of cut through some of that red tape that normally you would experience in a hiring process for an, for an organization the size of Kent County. So we are really proud with how that, how that recount worked, worked out. Continuing with our significant accomplishments, our office utilizes a lot of space in this building, the courthouse, and over in our Archives facility that we share with the City of Grand Rapids and the Public Museum. Throughout 2022, our teams in the court and the registers office have worked collaboratively to ensure we're not hoarding, but instead keeping the records that we're required to keep and implementing, implementing the schedule in accordance with the law so that we can dispose of legally what we can to ensure that we're maximizing the space that we have and preserving the records that we're required to. Facilities and purchasing have been amazing partners with our office to help source shelving amid supply chain issues. Again, I said what we do is important, but it is unsexy. You would be amazed at the conversations and the emails and, and the meetings that we have to talk about shelves. Important. But as we, you know, we kind of talk, there is, these photos are pictures of our storage facility at the Archive Center. It's very, very fascinating. So I'd love to help set up a tour of our facility, of the Archives for any commissioner that's interest, interested. It's really neat. You'll be able to maybe see some of what the museum has. If you're a nerd, I've, I've heard a lot, I mean, our resident nerd, Commissioner Wooden, isn't here, but if you want to geek out, if you want to geek out, go to Archives. It's awesome. And then, so these, this isn't my accomplishment or my office's accomplishment. They are individual accomplishments, but I have to boast a little bit because I'm so proud that two of our employees in 2022 were recognized by the county for Quality Service Awards. Danielle, in our court clerk's office, was employee of the quarter, one for quarter four, I believe. And Kate, sometimes she's a familiar face for those who interact downstairs at the, at the vital records office. Kate was employee of the quarter, I believe, for quarter three. They are true public servants and they really are a reflection and a representation, not just of, of my office, but as the county, of the county as a whole. And, and they bring, they, they bring their best and they represent the best. As we look ahead to what we're dealing with this year and early next year, kind of the overarching threat, because it's an unknown, is always budget challenges. Proposal two, which voters passed last year, drastically changes about every aspect of elections and how we administer and how they're paid for. The legislature is currently working on implementing legislations. And so we're really unsure at this point how much our elections will cost moving forward. The state will be paying for some of it. But when it comes to early voting provisions, that's largely going to fall on our local jurisdictions or our county jurisdictions. So just the uncertainty with what this all means in terms of cost. Additionally, as I shared earlier, an economic arguable downturn has had a negative impact on the revenues collected by the Register of Deeds Office. Currently, a portion of the revenues that we receive from each filing, again, this is statutorily mandated, goes into our automated automation fund. It's the Register of Deeds Automation Fund, affectionately known as the Tech Fund, for which we use, for which we use qualifying expenses such as software maintenance, technology product, projects. It's all supposed to be technology-related. So with interest rates growing and as high as they are, property purchases and refinances down again, we were recording a fraction this year compared to where we were last year, in the last three years. So that means, well, we may need to rely more on general fund for expenses that we otherwise would have historically been paying for out of our tech fund. Legislative changes are also storming through our offices, not just in elections, but in the court office, clean slate legislation that allows for certain types of nonviolent convictions to be set aside and removed from an individual's record. On the first day that the program started, which was really this year, so we'll talk more about it next year, we received 7,000 set aside orders alone on the first day. Processing these is extremely time-consuming and will be challenging as we implement the protocols to keep up with the change and make sure that we're maintaining these records accurately and as well as securely to, for the privacy of, of our public. The state is providing some funding to assist, but overall, the project is just a challenge to an already busy office. Again, I mentioned Proposal two and that we're awaiting word from the legislature. It's, I kind of want to give you just a brief, brief idea of what we're looking at, what some of the provisions are. It's not a secret that I didn't support Proposal two. But our office is committed to implementing the constitutional and the legislative changes. And we're going, we're going to do so. For Proposal two, it took, or going back, as we worked to implement Proposal two, it took our clerk community four years to figure out how to implement every aspect of Proposal three from 2018. And I mean, for lack of a better term, Proposal, Proposal two of 22 is like Proposal three on steroids. There's just so much to it. And many of the changes are going to be hard because they, they're, they take into account a more centralized process. And so to make, make those changes work in a very decentralized state like Michigan is going to be challenging for the clerks and the voters to understand and implement. But I'm committed to making sure that we do that and we do it well. But just some of the challenges dealing with that, for instance, early voting. This constitution now requires that we have at least nine days of early in-person voting, which is different than absentee voting. Absentee voting is where you fill out your ballot, you mail or you drop it off, but it is not, it is not tabulated until election day. Early voting is where you tabulate that ballot right then and there. Some counties are consolidating and making, forming agreements to have one or several early voting sites around the county, so the county's taking that on. We're not doing that here in Kent County. As of right now, we have neither the staff nor the budget to manage that process. But mostly, it's not really something neither I nor our local clerks wanted the county taking on for the local voters. So you'll, you'll see here in Kent County, our local jurisdictions will be implementing nine, the nine days of early voting, where in other counties, the county will be heading that up. And so we all came to, I mean, it was, it was very fortunate that, that our partners in our local jurisdictions and the county really kind of were on the same mindset going into this. If going forward, after our first experience in 2024 requires us to sit down and reevaluate that arrangement, we will absolutely do so. But as of right now, our local voters know the local jurisdictions better in terms of the locations and honestly, the convenience to go to their own local jurisdiction versus somewhere in the county. So we'll continue to be watching that. You'll also see more clerks maybe pushing the envelope here with early voting and offering more than nine days. So I've heard anywhere up from 20 to 40 days, the full 40-day absentee voting time period. That may pose some real equal access questions that, you know, whether, I, I can't say, but I, I would assume that that concept will be dealt with in court. But regardless of what happens, I really am, I'm very confident that we'll make early voting work here in Michigan and work in Kent County, and we'll do so securely. Now we need to, another provision, we have to accept absentee ballots. This does impact the county more. Absentee ballots from military and overseas voters up to six days after the election, if they were postmarked on, by election day or before. That's really going to change, impact how we canvass our election. I was hoping to kind of have, have this occur in the last May election where it was, you know, a smaller, smaller size election so we could kind of work through, work through this. We didn't have any, so our, it's highly likely our first experience with late absentee ballots will come in 2024. And so we're just trying to figure out how we, with the timeframes, they're so tight, set in place for us to get our canvassing done, waiting six days to start that, and how, just how are we going to deal with that? We're working through. It's, it's a complicated process. And we may even have to set up a whole other system just to deal with those particular ballots. But then we have to also maintain the secrecy of the ballot. And with such few ballots, that may be an issue. So it's just a lot of, a lot to sort through, a lot to work through. And then another provision, automatic ballots. I think maybe some of you will, will likely disagree with me, but I really feel like the automatic ballot provision is the most troublesome of Proposal, of Proposal three. It's where voters can now fill out one absentee ballot application and, or I'm sorry, yes, Proposal two. One absentee ballot application and receive a ballot automatically in subsequent future elections. I feel like one of the crown jewels of our election integrity and security has always been that we don't automatically send ballots in Michigan. We require an application for which we verify the signature even before a ballot is sent, every single time. But again, the voter spoke and we are going to implement this and implement it as best as we can. But I, I can guarantee there's going to be great confusion and room for error with this provision because it's different than the permanent absentee voter list. Folks on the permanent absentee voter list will still get their applications sent every election. Folks on the, what I'm calling the automatic ballot list, once they send their one application, will get ballots for every election. We're going to have voters who think they're on one list and not the other. And, and it's just, it's going to take a lot of, a lot of education. I don't know that the folks pushing this and thought this was a good idea were the ones that had to stand in front of voters and attest to all the checks and balances as they're removing this. And, but we're going to make it work. One other provision that's a big one for our locals is the constitution now requires that all absentee ballot material, the applications, the ballots themselves, the return ballots, that is postage paid. So the voter no longer has to pay for stamps for postage to bring back their absentee ballot. Kind of a sigh of relief, I believe, that our local clerks are, are exhaling is that the state will be reimbursing local clerks for that expense. So while the great, they're going to have great expenses, this will not be one of them, at least at the local level. It's still an expense for taxpayers at the state level. Another aspect is private donations. Donations from private entities or nonprofits can now be accepted to use for funding elections. This kind of began really in 2020 or came to the forefront in 2020 when grants funded by nonprofits helped to pay for election-related expenses throughout the country. It was a point of controversy. I believe it went in court. I don't know that it was even resolved before we, before we voted in, on this provision and the people decided that's what they want. So now it will be constitutionally provided for. Some jurisdictions in Kent County and several counties sought out and accepted those funds. At the time, in Kent County, we did not because I really felt that private funds shouldn't be used for public education, or public elections. I felt it's a fundamental requirement for government at all levels to prioritize and fully fund our elections. And I felt that was an abdication of, of our government's responsibility. responsibility. I don't know what we'll do going forward, we'll have to, I, I still believe we shouldn't abdicate that responsibility on our government, and, but I, I don't know what we'll see with other jurisdictions, I don't know where we'll go from there, it's, it's new territory for us. Then, one other provision, there's, there are several other provisions, but one other, the last thing I want to note with this is, because it does impact us a little bit, the constitution now says that anyone who is a precinct delegate or on the leadership committee of any political party organization cannot conduct or audit our, conduct the audit of our elections. I believe that was well-intentioned, but that's a problem for county clerks because we are the ones who audit our local elections. But because we're a private, we're elected on a partisan ballot, we statutorily serve on our respective county parties' leadership committees. So it's an unfortunate unintended consequence, and I'm not sure it will be easy to change as constitutional provisions are just, and they should be, it should be hard to change a constitution, but this will be very difficult to allow, to make changes, to allow our county clerks to conduct what they're statutorily required to do when it comes to audits. How we're going to handle that is, our Elections Division will continue, our Elections will continue to be audited by my Elections Division, their Elections Staff, and I will simply monitor the results to ensure that the process is transparent, that the public is open, and that my staff is conducting the audit appropriately. So we talked about a lot of change, a lot of change, and it's going to require a lot of public education. As thing, but we're kind of, we're kind of sitting in the land between here right now as we wait for implementing legislation and things like that. Plus, there are other reforms outside of Proposal Two that the legislature is considering that could, that could, you know, change 2024. So, you know, once things all shake out with that, we're going to get back to work with our local clerks and make sure that we're giving our voters those secure, transparent, fair, and accurate elections that they deserve, to the extent, to the greatest extent possible, working within the parameters that we have. I'm looking forward to going back on the road in 2024 to, to continue educating our voters. So that's a big look ahead, and then finally, we've been looking into and working on this for some time now, and now we're looking forward to implementing, to implementing in our Register of Deeds Office, a program called Title Fraud Notify. It's a free of charge opt-in system that will allow anyone with real property in Kent County to sign into, to opt into. Title fraud and property theft is, I mean, it's a serious white, white collar crime of which we don't even know the extent, simply by nature of how it happens and, and how most people find out, not when it happens, but when they go to make a transaction with their rightfully owned property. It occurs when someone who does not have the deeded rights to a property, to a property's title, files a fraudulent transfer document and assumes ownership of that property, and then either takes out a line of credit, or sells the property and collects the proceeds, or just keeps the property to themselves. And in most cases, it happens before the rightful owner even is aware a transaction has taken place. It's one of those things that it's nearly impossible to prevent, just like anybody intent on crime, it's, it's impossible to prevent, so when it happens, we have to, we have to punish hard. The punishment is really the best deterrent at this point with, with the process that we have in place now. It's important to note that our office, as the Register of Deeds, we have no investigatory abilities, responsibilities, obligations, or authority when we're presented with a document pertaining to real property in Kent County that meets the requirements, the recording requirements, they're, they're just simply standards set forth in statute. If it meets the recording standards, we are required to record the document. Therefore, we're really, we're really hamstrung and limited in the role that we can play on this issue, but the Title Fraud Notify program is a, is a good first step that we can take to be more proactive. The message needs to be though, that it's not prevention, it's notification. But that really, that helps because once somebody is notified if this happens, they can take proactive steps to remedy the situation with law enforcement. So that way, that way, before they are in the midst of trying to conduct a transaction, it, you know, they've, they're already aware that something has occurred, and hopefully the situation's been remedied. So how property, how Title Fraud Notify will work, anyone with real property in Kent County can sign up for the automated, automated email alerts, based on configurations with first name, last name, their business name, their address, other data fields like parcel number, we can even, we can even index a notary name. When a document's recorded using any of that information, the constituent will, the property owner or the, the constituent will receive an alert detailing potential fraud situations. It's really important to know that most of these alerts will not be fraud, they're just going to notify that something was recorded with that property, that name, that whatever, so that, you know, if I've refinanced my home and it's gone into a recording and I'm in the system, I'm going to get an alert that my record was, you know, there was a transaction with my record. I'm going to be aware of that. If, if I'm just going along one day and some criminal ring has, has somehow succeeded in, in getting through this fraudulent scam, I'm going to get a notification, and that's when I can take steps to, to, to make that situation, to repair that situation. So as the, this kind of new, newish to us area of fraudulent crime, is, it's newer to us because, again, it may be happening and we don't know it, it may not be happening, but we are hearing, we are hearing, we are hearing word that, that things are happening, even though we're not aware, and so we just want to be as proactive as possible. So we've just begun conversations to work with industry partners like the Grand Rapids Realtors, who we've spoke with recently, and title companies to learn more about what they're doing, what they're seeing, what they're hearing, what we do on our end. We just all kind of want to be, I want us all to be rowing in the right direction and partnering where we can and where we should. So for the, for our property or title fraud notification system, our IT right now is working, or Tyler Technologies is our vendor, our software vendor, and they're currently working with Jerry and our IT team to get this up and running. It's taking a lot longer than, than we had hoped, than we expect, but again, when you're dealing with IT and security issues and things like that, it just, it becomes more complicated in that implementation than it, than it appears on the surface. So I look forward to announcing, an announcement to both you and the public as soon as possible. So that's my annual report. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them, otherwise I can give you the overview of what we do with our Elections 101.
Sorry, I was asking a question of legal counsel. So, are you ready for questions?
I am.
All right.
I, if I'm not, these four better be.
Commissioner Ponstein, you have your pencil up, pen up, hand up.
Yeah, it's Lori's favorite, it's the Ty Condoroga number two. She wasn't here, so, inside joke. So you had mentioned the ballot proposal 22-2, and you keep saying that this is what the voters voted for, this is what they wanted. You know, the problem with the ballot proposals, they're so complex, you don't know what's in it, that, that is so untrue. The voters didn't know what the ramifications of this is, and it's, it's, it's going to be changing, and it's going to add more areas for fraud to occur in our elections. As much as we try, it's still going to happen, so I just wanted to point that out. But my big thing I wanted to talk to you about, and I've been talking to you about this issue for over a year now, I've talked to Al, I've talked to Linda, this title fraud is real. I got a call from an individual in Kent County, had their house taken from them, they're now in court, probably 6,000 to 10,000 in legal fees to try to fight this. When, when they question, you know, people, law enforcement, well, there's nothing we can do, the courts, there's nothing we can do, the clerk's office, we're unaware of, there's nothing we can do. Well, if there's nothing we can do, then we've got to stop these electronic transactions occurring. We're up to 80% now, and I don't think they are secure. Even, you know, we're, we're going to work on prevention, I mean, notification instead of prevention, that's not going to stop this. And for me, as a commissioner, who heard this story from someone that actually had it, and I bet you there's more, but there's, like anything else, kind of a stigma where people with identity theft, a lot of times, law enforcement and the courts say, well, you're the one that gave them access over your phone, you know, the, the senior citizen that doesn't understand the process. So, I mean, that's all unacceptable. I mean, if we're not going to be working on prevention, and we're thinking that punishment's going to take care, most of these things are happening from overseas, government-backed crime syndicates that are doing this. So, you know, I, you know, let's, I mean, let's give notification a try, but really? I mean, I mean, what could go wrong with that? Well, we got the wrong phone number, the person was gone when this notification came to them, you know, the whole list, or it got kicked to their spam, and, you know, I'm not a big fan of email, everyone at the county administration staff know that, just the problems I have, just getting communication. So, you know, you know, I appreciate the effort, but, you know, this has been going on a while, and it's, and it's, if it's, goes from one thing to another, and there's always something new, and what they're attacking is anything they can get their hands on electronically. And, you know, I don't know how these people are breaking our IT system to get into that, but the ease of the stories I've had, read, and how this happens, the ease they can get into our system, and the ease that they can change these documents is unacceptable to me as a commissioner. And, you know, reach out to people, I mean, this is happening. And, you know, you hear it every single night that you now need not only identity theft insurance, which I don't know what that costs, but now you need title fraud insurance, and it just goes on and on, and this is all around one issue, our reliance on artificial intelligence, our reliance on digitizing and recording everything online. I mean, the best way to do it is make them people come back in person, a couple like these, prove in who you are before you can do anything changing a document, because we've got a wealth of information that can be used in a criminal way. And, like I said, after I heard this phone call from this lady, I don't know if we've got a secure system. And the attitude from our judicial courts, law enforcement, and even the clerk's offices that this, there's not a lot we can do about it, is totally unacceptable. We're government, we charge fees to have those things filed, we should at least be able to secure it, and if we can't do that, then I think we owe something back to the person that was a victim of this crime. And they are, these aren't just crimes, these are felonies. They're forging a signature, they're using the mail service, they're using a computer to, in an act of crime. I mean, it's, it's endless, and I guess the ones that I'm most disappointed is our, I hear it every day, the overworked judges that seem that there's nothing we can do. So that's my rant, you've heard it, I've been talking to you for over a year on this, and it was on my radar right off the bat, but, yeah.
It, I will say, it, I, I agree with you, wholeheartedly, when this happens to somebody, they are, they are a victim, and it is, it's very, very serious crime. I kind of take exception that, that the attitude is more laissez-faire, and we just have to work with the parameters we have. I don't know if perhaps, you know, you're in a, you are in a position with the Michigan Association of Counties, is this something that other counties are experiencing as well? Is there, you know, are there state parameters that we should be looking at? I, I don't know, we just are working with the system that we have, and notification is really where I can begin, is what other counties are now doing, Alleghen County, I think Ottawa County, Kalamazoo County, Wayne County, are there others? County, I think we're, we're all realizing that, you know, the, the most proactive step we can take at this stage is to at least start, and I, I appreciate that you recognize that that's, that that's a good first step, and we'll see what we can do, and I, I do believe, I, it's not a belief, we know that it occurs, we just don't know the extent of, the extent or magnitude that it, that it's occurring at this point. So it's, it is, it is frustrating, I feel that.
Title fraud's been around forever.
Right, since we've been recording land records, and it, it's not been since 2020. You know, it's...
I just wondered whether there's any evidence to suggest that it's greater now with electronic filing than it was before, or is it easier to find with electronic recording?
That's a good question, I would, I will definitely look into it. The intent of electronic recording, I know, is to, to make it secure, to have, you know, it's not just some random party that's electronically sending us documents, we have, you know, there's, there's a whole system in place that require, the state requires us to have agreements put in place with those, those legitimate entities that are sending us recordings. The folks, it's, and it's not for everybody, not everybody, every transaction is eligible for e-recording. For example, if you're just kind of a, you know, third party, you know, third party without, without Realtors or without, you know, all of that, without the title companies, if you, if you're not working with a title company, you're not eligible to e-record. Those are the ones that we generally will get in our office to, to deliver their documents.
But before e-recording, and physical recording, you got the notarization on the signature, but you don't require the person signing it to be present to record it, I mean.
Correct.
We'd usually send my secretary down to do that.
Correct.
I'm not going to do it.
Correct.
But, so there's really no verification under the prior system either, was there?
No, not in that regard. I will, I will, I do think you ask a good question, and I think it bears merit to research to what transactions, what types of transactions have fallen victim to the title theft and the, the property fraud.
Yeah, I presume they're vacant lands primarily because that's easier to do.
Much more, yeah.
And, and the victim is usually the ultimate buyer, not the fee owner, because the fee owner's property's still there, they just got a clear title on it. I'm sorry, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Bujek.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I'd like to congratulate you on all the things that you do outside of the elections that are, that you've made us aware of. I think the, the clerk's office has quite a few responsibilities, and it's good to have a understanding of all those things. We kind of think that your office is only related to the elections, but there's so, so many other aspects to it, and obviously, I think Kent County's done a great job on all those things. My concerns are, and I want to make two comments here, one is about Proposal Two and election integrity. I was not a supporter of Proposal Two, and I don't really think the voters really understood what the unfunded mandates meant as far as cost involved, and the difficulty of trying to implement all those precariously instituted constitutional mandates. And so, I feel for you and your office in trying to do the right thing, which is live up to the state constitution now, and try to fulfill those requirements in election integrity. My concern is with the Dominion, is it Dominion Software, is that what you're using?
That's what we use, yes.
And, and my concern is about its vulnerability, and so I'm kind of waiting to see how it plays out on the national stage, but I think there are a lot of vulnerability to that software, and we'll see how that all plays out. I mean, you have to use it and, and do the best that you can with that software, so, you know, I'm not asking that you do anything different. The only alternative would be going back to paper ballots, and I don't know that that's a reality, but again, my concern... a reality, but again, my concern, and that, what I'm hearing from my constituents, is for election integrity related to the Dominion software.
I can touch on that. Oh, I'm sorry.
And then the second, the second part is on the title fraud. We've heard from Arizona that, and I don't know how this has played out, but there are elected officials that have been given titles in the form of deeds from the cartel, and in a form of payment for some type of quid pro quo, or whatever. And it's my understanding that that may actually be happening here in Michigan also. So, I think title fraud is a very big concern, and we really need to keep an eye on that, and watch to see that that type of activity doesn't pour out and end up here in Michigan also.
Um, real quickly, I, I hadn't heard that about Arizona with, with the cartels. That's fascinating. We'll have to look more into that, and just become more aware of what's going on outside of Michigan as well. Regarding the election integrity concerns, admittedly, that's why I started doing our elections roadshows, was just to kind of explain the process. As it relates to our equipment, the state law requires that the county clerks select, in, in, in conversation with the local clerks, county clerks pick the, select the system that will be used in each county. And in 2017, after doing a lot of research and talking with our local clerks, and seeing how this would, how each of our potential vendors and election software systems would work, we went ahead and we selected Dominion, Dominion voting systems. And I will say, I have full faith and confidence in our elections and in the equipment that we use. Remember, they're just calculators. The key is paper ballots. We have to continue using paper ballots. There, I will, I will fight to the end if there's ever an effort to eliminate our, our requirement that we cast our ballots on paper. The paper trail is what matters, and to have those checks and balances in place, that's how we know, that's how we know our software is working, that's how we know our equipment is working. And, you know, I'd love to sit down with you more and talk about how that, how that works, but that's why these public, these tests are so important, and it's why it's important that they're transparent, that the public is allowed to come in and allowed to watch these tests. So, we can test to make sure our equipment, our Dominion voting systems is working before the election, that it's zeroed out. It's important that we have our paper ballots so that we can go back and do a recount if necessary. So, it's important that we have the paper tabulator tapes, so that we know exactly how many ballots were issued, matches how many ballots were tabulated. There's so many checks and balances that make, that make, because fraud could happen. But that's why checks and balances are important, is to make sure that our elections are accurate. And, and so, that's why I get very concerned when there's all these proposals in the Constitution. I want to make sure that we are not chipping away at the checks and balances that we have, because I want voters to have confidence. And that's why I like to go out and talk about what checks and balances we do have, what our process is, how we test our equipment, how we canvass every single vote, regardless of whether it's Hart, Intercivic, Dominion Voting Systems, ESNS. You know, what matters is that we have the paper ballots, and we have election officials with integrity to carry out these duties.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Stack, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for being here and for your work. You know, I knocked on a lot of doors during campaign season last year, and a lot of folks asked me about, you know, election fraud, and it was a hot-button issue for a lot of my constituents. And they asked me, you know, how I felt about it, and, and, you know, do you think that's a problem here in Kent County? And I said, I can't speak for what happens in other counties, but I've seen how the process works firsthand in Kent, and I know how hard the folks that we elect and the folks that they hire work to ensure that that process is secure and safe and accurate and everything else. So, my answer in short would be, yes, I think there's fraud, but I don't see it here where we live, and I can't speak for what they do elsewhere. But that being said, I guess that's just a job well done. Thank you. That being said, I too share a lot of concerns, obviously, about Prop Two. I don't envy the situation that you and other county and local clerks are in, trying to navigate. Anytime we have a citizen initiate, initiative, I think it's hard to work through from legislative perspective, the implementation, and you're in the implementation. But I just wanted to get, see if you, if you are able to provide a little bit more information about what that might look like, understanding that, especially as, I have two questions on that, but first regarding early voting. As we look at different municipalities kind of doing different things around, around Kent County, do you know if there's a lean toward, I, I imagine that, in fact, I know that we don't have the time or the resources to do an early vote at every single polling place, right? But is that leaning toward, you know, I live in Plainfield Township, so for example, there'd be early voting at Township Hall. Is that kind of what you're seeing from the clerks, that that's what they're going to prefer to do?
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate every precinct is going to have its, I mean, you have to buy equipment. I mean, there's, it would, it's, it doesn't, with 250 precincts, that's just not realistic. So, what I, what I would expect is some of these smaller jurisdictions will likely have their early voting sites either onsite at the Township Hall, or they'll have a place, like a one location where folks can go and vote early. I, for larger jurisdictions, my guess is you'll see maybe a couple different, different spots. So, it, I think that's what they're looking to work out at, at this point right now.
Cool. No, that's helpful. I just, I keep thinking about how this is all going to look in, from a practical perspective, from an execution perspective, and I think the more that...
You and me both.
Yeah, I know. And I know that you're kind of gazing into your crystal ball a little bit here too, but the more that, if you can continue to keep us as commissioners apprised on what that's going to look like, as far as you know, folks come to us to find out a lot about, you know, how to vote and where to vote and that sort of thing. And I know I won't have all the answers like I normally do to those questions right away. So, and then briefly, if I may, Chair, one more question. Just the other piece of the Prop Two issue, you mentioned the automatic ballot provision. I know, again, it's a little bit of a crystal ball moment for you, but how, how do you plan to work through some of those challenges? Because I worry a lot about that extra check of sending in the application before receiving the actual ballot. I know that, you know, the signature comparison and that sort of stuff is critical to that verification, and I know you spoke about it briefly, but just, what do you, what, I know you guys will handle it, but I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what, what do you plan to do to try to mitigate that? It's a really tough thing for you to be put, to be put on your plate.
It is tough. I think what I, what I would envision, what I would like to see is, with the automatic ballot provision, it makes the signature verification on the absentee ballot envelope that much more critical. And so, I think we need to place a huge emphasis on even training election officials to verify signatures, or if there's software out there that, that, you know, financial institutions use, maybe that's worth discussing. But I really think we need to hone in on, on professionalizing signature verification for those absentee ballot envelopes, because you're not also getting the first one with the application every election. So, that's one. Another thing that I think we need to do is, as, as election administrators, both at our level, as well as our local units, we have to make sure that we're continuing, not necessarily to put the pressure on the state, but continuing to hold the state accountable for the qualified voter file, not just, not just its accuracy and, and how up to date it is, but also its functionality administratively. And so, again, because you've got these two different fields with the, again, I'm calling it automatic ballot, I, it's a different term for the qualified voter file for administrative purposes. You've got that, and then you've got the permanent absentee voter list. And so, you know, any little bug in that, or any kink, or any hiccup has consequences. And so, I think making sure that our qualified voter file is accurate and up to date, make sure, making sure that it is 100% functioning properly at all times, and then making sure that we're verifying the signatures right and well on the absentee ballot envelopes is really, that's all I can think of at this point, to help ensure that, that we're providing security and integrity to the greatest extent possible with that provision.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, and it's not an easy task. I appreciate you going on the spot like that too, Clerk.
Sure.
And I just appreciate your work to balance that. We want access for everybody to have the opportunity to vote. We also want to balance that with the security of the election. So, thanks for what you and your team do there.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to commend you, and thank you for all the work that you do. As I've mentioned in the past, I'm a political science major at GBSU, and we talk all the time about the challenges with voting in other countries, and the, the big push, the big doubts that are out there with our elections. And you're at the front lines of that, and I definitely agree with you that...
Yeah.
Doesn't like me, I guess, maybe.
You have some kind of electromagnetic energy.
And I definitely agree with you that we need to do all we can to keep our, our paper ballots. I mean, it's, that is, I think, the key to making sure that whatever questions may be out there in the future and currently, that we'll always have that record to go back to. I definitely agree with you on that. I have a couple of questions, if I may, really quickly. Just to confirm, so you're saying that there may be, so I, for example, vote at the Sitter Travis School. So, you're saying that there may be some voting locations that are consolidated, but others are not, it just depends on the local clerks?
On Election Day, you will, every precinct will have their voting location, but strictly for early voting, you might see your local clerk either have early voting center established right at City Hall, or they may have, they may have multiple, multiple centers within that jurisdiction. I, I don't know, and I don't think they know yet.
Okay, okay, makes sense. And then, I, I've, there's been some clerks and other persons of the state who very recently wrote an open letter, I'm not sure if you saw it, where they're saying that they, it's their opinion that the primary needs to be moved to June, August. And I was wondering if you had any thoughts on that, they're saying that they just don't have enough time with the current changes and upcoming changes to, to do that full count and do that full work in between elections, and so I...
Yeah, I have, I appreciate that question, Commissioner. I do have some thoughts. Admittedly, that's something that we probably may have been able to address back when I was in the legislature and chaired the Elections Committee. There was, we had, one of our members wanted to move our primary date from, from August to June, and at the time, again, not having the full breadth of, you know, not having a crystal ball and knowing exactly what we're dealing with, with these election reforms. Do you want to turn your mic off?
Yes, sorry.
Not, not dealing with, you know, all these election reforms that have come to pass since then. I looked at it, you know, and, and it is something to consider as a, as a candidate. You know, do you, moving the elections months out, or, you know, a couple months earlier means you're going to be walking in snow and that kind of thing, and is that something voters are going to be paying attention to? And does it elongate the whole election process and create voter fatigue and more expensive elections? So, there's, there's those political or, you know, campaign-related thoughts, which was really kind of my center as to why I wasn't, you know, I was more ambivalent to not making it a priority. But with, with these changes and the tight timeframes that we have, and making sure that, again, elections aren't just Election Day, or they're not even going to be the nineties early voting. We start months ahead of the election to program these, to program our equipment, to test the equipment, to program our ballots. You know, we have, we have like 500 or some different ballots in Kent County in one of our, in, you know, a major county-wide election. That's a lot of work to program, and it's not just we don't want to work, we don't want, we want to make sure that we're doing quality work. And so, with all of these provisions and, and spreading, you know, the responsibilities that we have, stretching that so thin, I think, I do think it's important that, that the primary would be moved solely administr, for administrative purposes, to that, to that June date, so that, so that, you know, we're accommodating early voting, we're accommodating forty-five, forty, forty-five days of absentee voting, we're programming our elections, we've got time to program it. And it's not just that we program, we also, once they're programmed, we have to go through a whole process to approve the ballots for print. You know, we meet with a, it's a public, you know, public meeting to meet with our Election Commission to review the ballots, to print the ballots, and then it takes time, you know, up to 14 days to print the ballots. And so, it's, I, I do think that because our elections are getting so, so much more complicated in terms of extended, beyond just Election Day, I, I think that's a, I think that's a fair ask of election administrators.
Thank you. And I think it's just important with you having that experience both as a former...
Right.
Elected lawmaker, now as a clerk, to, to have that update, just hearing it from yourself.
So, I did a little mea culpa there.
Yeah, well, it's, I definitely agree with, with, with it. Obviously, you know, us living in this state, there's the winter, something that we have to deal with, but I do think, just as you said, for administrative purposes, it makes sense to, to my eyes. So, it'd be important, I think, to see what ends up happening at this stage, and hopefully we have some clarity on that soon. And I suppose I would say just lastly, I really want to thank you for the work that you're doing on the, the educational sessions that you're doing. I really do think that that type of work is really what we should be doing more of, to just address some of those concerns that are out there in, in the public. And I'm really glad that Michigan and, Michigan specifically, but throughout the entire country, we're seeing more young people voting. But I really would like to get those numbers higher, and I think talking to, to young people as early and as often as possible to get them involved in government and voting is, is what we need to be doing. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. And again, like I said, I've, I've really embraced that education ambassador role. We were able to do that a lot in 2020, because we were able to use $150,000 of CARES funding to be able to talk about the changes from proposal eighteen, or proposal two, in, three in eighteen, and, and to kind of assure voters during the pandemic how you're going to be able to vote, that kind of thing. So, that was really, really helpful. We haven't had that kind of budget in previous elections or since, but we were able to get a small, you know, a $50,000 communications budget for 2024, so that we can continue. There's so much to educate, not just how our elections are done, but now what the changes mean. So, we're, we're going to do the best with what we can, and to use our resources to, to, you know, promote change, you know, to educate and just make the public aware.
Commissioner Pakla.
Chair, I want to echo all of the kudos that you have gotten from our group up here. I, I really feel very confident in our elections here in Kent County. I know that during my time in East Grand Rapids, we had lots of great conversations about the great communication between local municipalities and the county clerk's office, and I, I just think that there's a fantastic crew that you have in your office there.
I appreciate that. I'm fond of them as well, but I'm biased. So, I feel validated.
I, my question is around, our resident data wonk is not here, so I'm taking on that, that role for a second here. Thinking about turnout at elections and the ways in which we are under a continuous improvement process in all that we do, I just pulled up the 2020 November election results, and we had 72.58% of our registered voters cast a ballot. I'm curious if we ever do any sort of polling of our local voters. I know there's national polls that, that look at why people do or don't vote, right? And certainly, folks have the right to decide whether or not they're going to exercise that right, right? But I'm curious if we have ever done, or might ever consider doing, that kind of data collection to understand if there are addressable barriers that we could look at here in the county to create better access for our county voters toward this fundamental right to vote.
Yeah, that's not something we've done, or even admittedly even considered doing. Again, should we go down that road, that's, what we do really beyond my education efforts is, is essentially, and this goes, this goes for all of the divisions in my office, we're pretty much 99% statutory services. Not that I'm, not that I'm opposed to doing more, truly, I, I'd love to get out there and do some more, just knowing that that would take, that would definitely take some more resources. I, here I am sounding like the government, right? But, but doing so really would take more resources to be able to, to execute that. But that's not necessarily that, that it's a bad thing, it's just something that we haven't done. And it, I, I don't know, and I don't know if it's something that, that we could partner with other organizations to find out either, you know, a public-private partnership.
I, I was going to suggest there's a political science student sitting right next to me that perhaps there might be some interesting student relationships or... to me, that perhaps there might be some interesting student relationships, or, or as you say, public-private relationships for that.
Awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
What we'll be moving into as we move into a year of elections.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I can hear her now.
Okay. As we move into, you know, all the complexities you're talking about, and as we move into an election year and all that it brings, you have a new elections director, so how are you preparing this poor elections director so that he'll be prepared-
We gave him a desk, we gave him a computer, he's all set. Yeah, it's, that's a really, really good question. You know, Mike comes to us, you probably are aware that he was an executive director of one of our local political parties, but you might not be aware that he's also more recently, and I think where his passion lies, is in public administration. He's recently received his master's in public administration from Graham Valley, and that kind of, the passion that he has there in administration is really, coupled with his background in elections, like just knowing the surface of, of elections really, really gives him a, kind of a unique, unique perspective. But what we're doing is we're making sure we're, we're getting him to our trainings through the state to get him accredited. Election administrators have to be accredited with the state, which means they have to be trained, they have to take exams, things like that. We're introducing him to, to our colleagues throughout the state so he can kind of have a group of people to, a sounding board, so to speak. But to be honest, it's, it's almost like to have a new elections director could be cause for panic, but it's almost an opportunity as well, because he doesn't know administering elections any other way than the way he's going to have to under these changes. And so, you know, it's, I don't have to teach an old dog new tricks, I just have to make sure that, that he's well-trained, and that's what we're going to do. Mike is really, I wouldn't, if you want to say anything, feel free to step up, but he's not afraid to ask questions, and he's, you know, both, both from externally, but also internally, how the county systems work, like we're just talking about, you know, he oversees two staff members or three staff members and the payroll, stuff like, so the county has increased its onboarding training as well for new employees, that's been helpful, I think. But yeah, we're just, I think, I think it's helpful to Mike to know that we're all walking through a dark hallway a little bit, feeling our way, so he's not the only one.
All right, anyone else? If not, I do have one. So regardless of whether you think Prop 2 is good law or bad law, most folks would agree that it's going to make the election process more expensive. And whether it is just staffing up, or you talked about validating signatures, and there's software that can do that, that's expensive software, that expense starts with us, doesn't it? And, and if so, have you taken a look at just how much more expense will the county incur in order to fully implement these properly?
Also a very good question. A lot of the expense, we've actually admittedly been a little shielded from at this point. The early voting expense is going to be on the, on the, the locals to implement, or, you know, the counties that are doing, you know, it just depends on the agreement, who's, who's going to, it's all taxpayer funds, right? It's all the taxpayers. But, you know, the state covering the, the state covering the postage, the entity responsible for early voting, you know, they're responsible for that kind of funding. At this point, and until and unless things change, we don't have a greater expense in terms of early voting yet. Our expense is really going to, it's, it's coming with, with maintenance, annual maintenance, which we didn't have to pay for the first five years of our election equipment that we, that we purchased in 2017, that was covered by the state. Now it's going to have to be covered by the county, and that's tens of thousands, if not hundred thousands of dollars. So that's, actually, it's tens of thousands. So that's something that's an increase that we haven't seen in the past. The cost to, the cost to program elections, that's something we used to do in-house until now. We had, fortunately, in our previous administration or with our previous equipment, it was just simpler, elections have got more complicated, more technologically advanced, and so, but we had an elections director with, in, in his realm, very unique expertise to be able to program those elections in-house, which saved us tons of money. Now we're going to, beginning this year, we are outsourcing that programming, and so that's an added cost. Sometimes that cost is going to be paid for by the state, sometimes it will get passed on to the locals, sometimes some of it will be borne by us. It just, I don't have a figure, unfortunately, and I, it could change based on whether or not we end up taking on an agreement for early voting in subsequent elections, or elections subsequent to 2024. But right now, we're just kind of, for us, the major expense is maintenance, programming, and, and this is discretionary, but it's important education and voter outreach.
So it'll be more expensive, we're just not sure where that cost will end yet.
Bingo, bingo.
All right, any other questions? All right, if not, if you have-
We had this 101 thing, you know, we covered a lot of what we talk about, and in the interest of time, I'd be willing to sit down with, unless you, Mr. Chair, feel differently, I'd be willing to sit down with members outside of the meeting and outside of this meeting to kind of go over if that's something they're interested in. I don't want to keep anybody longer than they want to be, but it's your prerogative, Mr. Chair.
Well, let's talk about the probability or possibility of doing that at a later time.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can I, I was going to ask a question on that.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
Well, Lisa, the, the people I talk, when, when you hear this word, election fraud, elections are stolen and all of that, and it's always said, well, we counted them, the ballots are all counted and all that, and the people I talk to, they don't question a machine's ability to count. It's a machine, there's counting machines forever. I think, and, and you highlighted some of it in the ballot proposal, too. I think the people I talk, their concern is, is that ballot that we've got in front of, is that a legal ballot from a legal person that's legally has the right to vote? I mean, that's a big thing. And I, I'm not accusing-
No, I, I don't take it personally.
That's, that's what I hear. And, and a lot of times, people who bring up that question then are put into this big pile, you're an election denier, you're a Trumpster, or whatever they want to label on that. All they want is people to-
Assurance, yeah. So I think that's, it's kind of a good question that you ask and a good statement that you make. I, that's why I try to be really patient when people have questions or doubts, or they're just convinced of, I, I want to meet people where they're at. And so if that's where they're, when they're coming at me with questions, or when they're coming at me with doubts, I want to meet them there. But again, that's why the process is so important, and as it relates specifically to ballots, you can't just make your own ballot. That's why it costs so much, that's why it goes through so much. I can't even take my, my legitimate bound township ballot and put it in a Lowell precinct, that's what the program, a Lowell precinct tabulator, it will not recognize it. The key to all of that is making sure, number one, our, our qualified voter file is accurate. You know, with, our elections can only be as, as secure, our integrity can only be so great as the integrity of the list we use, right? And so that's something that we have to, we have to be very vigilant about, and that's a responsibility from the state level on down to the local level. Interestingly, the counties really do not have author, authority or access to take off or remove or add people to the voter list. It belongs with the locals or the state. But that is really important, to make sure you have a sound list. It's important to make, again, make sure that the programming of these ballots is, is done impeccably. And so that's kind of, that's kind of where, where potential disconnect could be, is making sure that people who are eligible to vote are the only ones getting their ballots.
And then just-
I think we have now exhausted the questions for today.
I look forward to more.
Oh, we have not exhausted those questions. We have. All right, thank you so much for the presentation, all the hard work.
Thank you, I really appreciate your time.
Yeah, and we appreciate you doing this as a special work session, so thank you. Oh, we have public comment, and here from the public? I see no one. All right, I see no one from the public. Any miscellaneous?
Yes.
No miscellaneous, we are adjourned, thank you.